I'm bringing this regular town council meeting April tenth to order and have a roll call. Matter of fact.
You may, Councilor Braggman.
Present.
Chair Danforth.
Here.
Councilor Dumay.
Yeah.
Councilor Higgins.
Present.
Councilor Mackin. Council McGowan.
Here.
And Councila Pelletier.
Here.
Please join you to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, in the resolve with the liberty and justice for our home.
Mr. Manager, do we have adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, yes. Let me chair, we would like to reboot. Order number sixty-two.
Thank you.
I'm trying to make a motion that we strike that.
Oh, motion made by Councilor Bates, seconded by Councilor Higgins, all in favor. Yeah, motion passes seven-zero.
Thanks for coming.
To remember how to do one without roll call. Very good. So I am seeking approval, approval of the minutes from June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, and August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, regular meeting, and March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, executive session.
So moved second.
Motion made by Council Dumay, seconded by Councilor Braggman, all those in favor. Motion passes seven-zero. All right, so this moves us into our special presentation. We have Dr. Ling here. To go over our fiscal year twenty-six school budget, right over to you.
All right, thank you very much. Let me do something that's.
I think it's all on, basically, we're told, that we're told not to touch the microphone.
Don't touch, all right, okay. Well, thank you for letting Ron and Casey and I join you this evening to talk about our budget. And I, I want you to take notice that this is all I have with me. So I have a whole lot less, I'll have a whole lot less, shall we talk? Look at the numbers. So this is, this is very intentional, I'm trying to comply and, and I also actually appreciate the fact that we've now had a couple of years together and we've also improved some of our communication tools between the website, the app, some of the notices and letters, things that go out. So hopefully you do know things about, we do know, you know, why we're here and what we're talking about. So, and just making a joke about that. So, starting right in, for our budget this year, as with the past couple of years, we started in somewhere in November, December time, looked each department. Some of the factors this year are state, local, and federal, economy, uncertainty in state, federal level, which, you know, can affect us, but there's something that we're kind of being called upon, looking at, or fairly unpredictable at the moment. Salary and benefits this year were negotiated for the support staff. There's the Public Law Twenty Twenty Four, Chapter Six, Forty-three, Part G, which was the hourly rate increases for the hundred and fifty percent and a hundred and twenty-five percent. It's been on the news, I'm sure you've heard lots about it. So those things were all things that we were considering. Also with our annual MEA trust benefit, so that's our health insurance, the range this year was nine percent to eighteen. So we had normally come in towards the profit of that. This year, we're not exactly on the profit, but we're not on the lower, we're somewhere a little over twelve. That rate comes from having more than fifty-one people in our agreement and from high use of our insurance. So that's how that's how it is calculated. So in our two-seventy-nine, we received some additional subsidy this year and. Else. Oh, I wanted to say too about the increase. So we put all of our wages into a system and the, with the one-fifteen and the one-twenty-five, in our subsidy next year, we're supposed to get the difference, but we put in for wages for this year, what we're putting in for wages for next year. And they're, the state is supposed to give us the difference between that up to the rate that they had set for us. So it's not going to be a lot that's coming in for next year, but it is something that is noteworthy, that that's part of the transition phase in putting these wages in place. I wasn't sure if everybody knew that, I know I, I really talked about that. Um, some of the initiatives that we've imparted on are some shared services, cross-training, some use of technologies, the string line tasks, and taking a look at the who and the why we do certain things. We had a couple of surprises, our property insurance was a fairly significant increase over what our quote was when we put our budget together last year, and our actuarial fees, which we required to bring up to date for our audit, was a fairly substantial, substantial increase as well. With that said, that's kind of like the tone of some of the factors. If you want to take a look at the, at the first section, we'll go through it by cost centers. If you have, anybody has any question, please. So the first one, the first cost center you'll see is on page two, and it is total system administration. It's kind of, it's a little bit bolder print and darker than for each of the cost center. So that's three staff, that's three staff, the school board, retiree insurance, and our annual audit, and that house center is down by four point zero five percent.
Any council questions?
The, the next section is on page four. Again, it's the darker, bolder print, and that's school administration. There's two principals, one assistant principal, two school secretaries, one clerical assistant, and that cost center is up seven-five thirteen percent. The next one is on, on page eight. The bold. Writing in the middle, total for regular instruction, page eight, that cost center is up eight point zero two percent, and that includes eight, three, two, two, teachers, six, grade three through five teachers, one art teacher, and nine grade six groupies. And ten, grade nine, twelve.
Any council questions?
Council McGowan.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I notice on, because you didn't speak to that, but with all the wages, there's also the new main paid family medical leave, which I'm sure increased the budget as well. Could you just speak to that for a second?
Yes, that's true, that is the new law. The, the requirement is that we have one percent put in for the wages earned by each employee. We're splitting it so that the association has agreed that the employee will pay half a percent, we pay half a percent. That goes, and they started taking the money in January, it's kind of like a toll. But if the program is not able to be used or benefit for employees until, so they're kind of collecting it, I guess. I'd also say that they're really working on how the paperwork's going to work, how it's going to be distributed, how they're going to operate it. Actually, just this week, there was some information about a private organization that's trying to also figure out how to manage, manage the whole program.
We don't.
The next cost center is on page fourteen, special education, page fourteen. Again, it's the darker print, at the top, one thirty, and that increase here is seven point five six. That includes the special ed director with, we have it, so you would be still in Oak and Medway, so we share that cost. In this cost center, the entire salary is there, but we actually can voice out, so it's probably the rest coming in from the Medway. It also includes special ed secretary, twenty ed techs. System, and five special ed.
I do, I do have a question. Out of your total population, how many special ed students do you have? Do you have a number?
I should have. I can't think exactly what it is, but I'll send you, so that one's just kind of, yes, for me to work with.
I'm assuming, I don't know, I should assume that it's high, just based on past.
It, it is, it is, but you know what, it's really high everywhere. We actually had a lot of conversations about this, probably not more than ten years ago, the federal government didn't want you to have more than three to five percent of special ed in the school. And if you did, they actually thought you were doing something wrong, you could perhaps be evaluated for, you know, lack of care, because you were over identifying. Now, and look, throughout the state, out of country, it is very common, twenty to thirty percent of the kids want to go to a one father. There's also additional categories, we have additional types of special education programs now, because we have social skills programs. So there's a continuum, starting all the way from like SBI to the behavior programs, social programs, to some places more restrictive, and to laws have stayed the same as far as least restrictive environment, but they have some of the identification, there is, there is going to be.
Thank you.
And we experienced that. Page eighteen. Page eighteen, the student staff support. That's showing an increase of five point eight percent. That includes librarians, one at each school, one chaired school nurse, two guidance counselors, one at each school, and one. Page twenty, other instruction. Page twenty, other instruction, that's showing a decrease of four point seven six percent. That cost center has the athletic director, and it has various stipends supporting both our co-inex compared to our activities, things like all of our sports programs, field, equipment, all of the things that are needed for that, and also our drama and music programs, all of the fraud stipend, some of the copyrights, a lot of those things, everything for all of those extra programs. Page twenty-two, career and technical. No change there. Also, the rest of these, I guess, are pretty much page two, facilities and maintenance is down by six point six seven. That includes our facility manager, five custodian people in the building, fuel, electricity, building supplies, and building maintenance. There, as with our home, all of those things have gone up, they've fluctuated, but really they've gone up and kind of stayed consistent. But we have, Booy has worked really hard to get prices as good as they can be. Fuel bits, he's on top of, and a lot of the maintenance is not, doesn't have to be contracted out, there's a lot of that. So there is a little bit of savings there, still keeping our low. Also on page twenty-two, there's transportation, that's an increase of five point nine eight. They have a five-year contract with Bruce Braggman, and he provides our transportation for all of our regular ed programs, so it is coming and going each day, and also every is the extracurricular program that we have in co-curricular program. We do also use the van that we have, and those are being used a little bit more frequently. That's an increase, you'll see, well, I guess I have my notes, but you don't, last year, yeah, an agreement with Mr. Braggman, and then very graciously allowed us to change it for the year with the, with us, my little budget. So, increase that you should have had last year. Also remaining on page twenty-two, our debt service is our last payment. And other appropriations is down by eighty-four percent. Taking our bottom line on page twenty-three, the top three, that our budget, our overall budget is three point one four. The next pages, Ron, we won't talk to, there's the revenue. We, we probably should have changed the order just slightly because of that, the revenue. I think you have five separate categories, and so everything we just said is kind of very clearly articulated or printed there. But Ron will move over to revenues and then the town chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for not introducing you at the beginning. You're a very important part of this process, sorry.
I don't mind leaving the background.
So, we'll just start from the top. We proposed for local EPS assessment is one point three million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, and that's what, that comes from the eighty-two seventy-nine. Have raised, the debt service is ninety-five thousand, which I'll just review. Local appropriation that you need to raise, two million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, hundred and twenty-seven cents. Adult ed, probably just talk about from the eighteen seventy-one. We removed the school lunch program, any kind of contributions to that, it's a very healthy program, and per audit, they recommended that you would need to raise the additional money this year. The tuition for international program is actually down by twenty-five thousand, and that's because of kind of the climate, we don't have, and pursue this program. We do have. Two of the former schools, that's a rough situation, I keep that one more thing, have twenty-five thousand. EUT tuition pretty much remains solid, safe, tuition does go over every year, so it's like a safe number. The special education students for elementary and secondary are staying the same as flat, flat for a third, about three hundred and fourteen thousand for the secondary students. Our transportation for the EUT has gone up next year versus. Because the contract for the Bragg, Braggman's went up, and decreased that revenue rate. Athletic proceeds stay the same. Recreation retreats stay the same, building rental digital income for kids fees, so that's fine, we don't have to change, we went up on their rent. We do have a small E-rated reimbursement in here this year. Missling is receipts usually is more for like building rental interest, and the guitar counting board, thirty thousand dollars. The EPS allocation did go well, it went up roughly is six hundred and twenty-four thousand, which has become us considerably with our budget. We have SAC, special education, through a state of decline, fourteen thousand. ETS, child development services that's reimbursed for a student who, who's seen the sort of ETS, like graduate case. That's the shared, this is the shared cost for this, the time special education director. I know it's down a little bit, but that's because part of the salary has moved over from. Total entitlement, and we're now paying for fully, so we're actually going to reimburse that, they reimburse us fifty-one, seventy-one. And then we have the shared services, the superintendent is probably sixty-five hundred if only for health and for herself. Then we have no carry forward this year. Any council question, comments? Yes, Mr. Manager.
I don't have a question.
Yes.
I have.
Yeah.
You know, looking at the international program revenue, I could not possibly encourage people in our community to participate in that program for, and, and, for. Jim. It, not only in terms of producing revenue for the school, but my family hosted this last year as a student from the Jump the World program from Guatemala, and it was an incredible experience. I know that, you know, the, the range of experiences is pretty vast and could, could be different from family to family, but I know that it provided some revenue to the school, but it also provided an incredible learning experience for, you know, my wife and I, our kids, and this student from Guatemala and their family as well. So, you know, it, it is a, it's a big unknown if you've never participated in one of those programs, but anybody who's watching this later or following, or maybe Brian will talk about it in the newspaper.
Can.
It's a great, it's a great idea, and it's an incredibly rewarding process, so I can't encourage or hope that more people will.
That's a great essay, wonderful. You know, you make a good point too about using Dump the World, because it's smaller amount of time. So if you're trying to like see how it's going to fit with family or what you're going to think about it, it's just a small piece of time instead of pulling here. So, if, if anybody needs information, you can let us know.
Yeah.
Real terms about it. Reach out.
And I can back up his statements, even though I haven't hosted anybody, I've had a family member that has hosted several students in the past, it's been a wonderful experience, so. And you, we're moving on to the town chair for the FY twenty fifteen. And I apologize, I have my notes on the side, you guys can keep a note as well. That's usually how I track up what's happening. Want to start from the bottom up or the top down? From up.
Bottom up is easier to understand.
Okay, from the bottom up. Total increase FY twenty-five, it's two hundred and fifty-four thousand, two ninety-eight eighty-nine. That is the difference between we asked for last year to what we're asking for this year. That's all, that's the increase of the budget. We're asking for eight million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, three eighteen eighty-five. Okay, can we hope that, yeah.
Yeah, those numbers are different than what we have in front of us.
All right, I just need this one, sorry.
That's okay.
So we're asking for. The difference is two, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight eighteen twenty-four. That is the correct word. Our budget is this year is eight million, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight thirty-eight twenty. We're generating four hundred and nineteen thousand, hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents in revenue from the revenue base, that's just the revenue from this, this fee at the end. Eight-two sixty-two, two seventy-nine. Projected to receive is four million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars and three cents. Total local revenue accounting to raise is three million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, thirteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. We move up to the next. Well, it's actually down point, negative point eight to four percent, and that's the difference between what we're raising from last year to this year, we're down to three hundred and fifteen thousand, eight, eight, nine. We have no carry forward, I didn't mention. The difference, the next one up is the difference of local appropriation, four hundred and fourteen, one thirty, one ninety-one, and the difference in appropriation from the previous year. The funds you need to raise locally is three million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, thirteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. We are contributing no money to the school lunch program, we have, know that, we're adult education program, or two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-one cents. Additional money that needs to be raised, two million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven point two cents. The debt service is ninety-five thousand, sixty-five dollars, ninety-four cents, this is our last year debt service. And then from a two-seventy-nine, that one million, three hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirty-six dollars, five hundred and ten, well, seventy-nine that she raised, forty-two. Any questions, council comment? Yes, Council McGowan.
Not really a question, just a comment. So I just want to make sure that we all under. I understand it, I want to make sure everybody else understands it. So even though the budget has increased in expenses by two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight eighteen twenty-four, what you're asking the town to raise in taxes is actually down three hundred and fifteen thousand due to the extra revenue. So we are not asking, we're down in what we're asking. Yeah, thank you.
Council Braggman.
Thank you. I have several questions, but typically I ask you offline, we usually meet, I think I'd like to do that again, just to, it makes it more personalized, you can ask questions without feeling stupid. I ask my colleagues across the table some questions, and I didn't really get some answers that I was looking for, so I'm hoping they can do privately.
Absolutely.
Awesome, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other council comment, question? I will go to the public. Anybody have a comment or question that they would like to ask at this time?
Wow, this is quietest I've ever heard, the council and the public.
Sounds like. Sounds like there'll be some follow-up conversations with some of the other counselors, but, you know, in your path that you, in your summary, you provided us with information, as we can tell, uh, Mr. Manager, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. I, I just, I would like to say that it is, it's, it's wonderful to see that both the school budget and the town budget. Both being impacted by increases, you know, beyond our control over the last several years, and being both able to, literally, being able to make such great use of the revenue side of our budget to pass for less, that's right, for the community, that goes along. I, I think that's something that we haven't seen, that, for. To see, to see a decrease in that on both sides.
That's, thank you, Mr. Manager. No other council comment, questions? I think this concludes our special presentation. I know there'll be some follow-up, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Don't everybody leave, we got a lot of brilliant.
Hey, where'd you go, Julie? We still need you.
No, we're used to it.
Next time. So, Mr. Manager.
I don't care.
So, Mr. Manager, unless you have come up with a, a report that I'm not aware of, there is no manager's report?
I, I did not submit a report, but I do have just a couple of things I would like to say for the record. That we are making, we continue to make great progress on the cleanup of derelict properties, dangerous buildings, and, you know, what, what, what folks so passionately refer to as ISOs, the gym's dry cleaning building. I, the gym's dry cleaning building will be removed in the very near future. I believe the bid went into the paper today and out to uh several other individual contractors. Uh that one very gratefully was, was fully funded by the Brownfields program and the way we were able to address that with with the EPA. And uh we have another uh property that has been, uh you know, topic of, of discussion for, you know, quite a few years at this point. Uh we come to a successful agreement. That one will be reviewed by Brownfield's team the next couple of weeks and then likely will be out to be in the next month or so, uh following that. Uh and, and one other uh that we received a a very strong judgment in our favor from the court system, uh which is being played out now. Uh and, and is, is, you know, we feel very calm. So, uh two definites being take care of, clean up, make safer. I'm in the next one or two and That's all I got.
Is any of that property on Metairie Road?
Uh one of them is.
Would you please explain? I received your email. Would you please explain that? Can you add both the terms and conditions of that was expressed in that email?
Uh none of those are in sort. You know, they're uh yes, we, we gained ownership of it and you know, very cordially were able to agree on deciding of a release fee. Sure, sir. Any decisions to the council?
It does. I was wondering if it still had the access or use of that property for whatever purposes that they wanted to.
None of that is ready to be
Good.
Considered as.
Thank you.
That would, that would be out of the road.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead on order number fifty two. Counsel Higgins, can I have you read?
To order fifty two, twenty twenty five, providing for execution of the town warrant for April tenth, twenty twenty five. In order that town warrant for April tenth, twenty twenty five and the amount of hundred ten thousand five hundred thirty six dollars and eleven cents is hereby approved.
A motion made by Counsel Higgins, seconded by Counsel June.
Two thousand, five hundred fifty dollars and sixty four cents. Please just fire and rescue. Uh that's additions to new. Two thousand, four hundred dollars. Maybe that's engineering that goes on with the hangar, the tension. Three thousand, one hundred and five dollars. First scene, Sheriff Sawyer and Nelson. That's legal. A thousand, six hundred ninety five dollars and fifteen cents. Foundry Medical LLC, medical supplies. A thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars. Bowers Funeral Home. That's General Assistant Barrett. Uh three thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars. Searchmate Paratetic. That would be for the Fourth of July fireworks. Five thousand, four hundred and thirty one dollars and ninety two cents. Ted River. That's diesel. Seven thousand, sixty eight dollars and fifty nine cents. Union Financial Services. That's the credit card. Hearts or a thousand, one hundred and sixty eight dollars and forty five cents. Fire Safety USA. That's supplies and tolls. Eight thousand, three hundred twenty five dollars. Harrison Shader Enterprise LLC. That's the extractor. Seven thousand, ninety nine dollars and fifty cents. Heart of Mean Construction. That's the D, D B G grant. Five thousand, ninety four dollars. May municipal. That's training. Four thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. May Municipal Association Network is Tom. Three thousand, two hundred twenty nine dollars, ninety six cents. Me Tech Technology Group. That's computer services. Four thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. Millock Insurance. That's insurance. Eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and twenty eight cents. Municipal Waste. That's waste disposal. One thousand, two hundred and twenty four dollars and seventy five cents. That's part. Two thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and seventy two cents. Insol company. Nine thousand, two hundred and thirty one dollars and forty cents. No, the petroleum services. That's the fuel dispensing and the training with it. Ten thousand, eight hundred ninety eight dollars and thirty one cents. Proper oil. That's heating oil. Five thousand, three hundred dollars. R H R Skiffy Company. That's on prep. A thousand, two hundred and twenty five dollars. Water thinking to LLC. That's the ice rescue trading.
And we have a council comment on this order? Any public comment? See and none will take it to a vote. All those in favor of ordering number fifty two. Passes seven zero. Counsel June May, can I have you read order number fifty three?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Order number fifty three dash twenty twenty five, providing for execution of wastewater warrant for April tenth, twenty twenty five. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for April tenth, twenty twenty five and the amount of fourteen thousand, ninety eight dollars and five cents is hereby approved.
Motion made by Counsel May, seconded by uh Counsel Higgins. Any council comment?
Yes, I have two. Oh, you're open for council comment.
Well, you're, you, you're a counselor and you may comment.
Uh two thousand, five hundred eighty dollars for bushard cleaning and restoration. Um that's for the server repair. Six thousand, seven hundred ninety nine dollars and sixty six cents. Island Tech Services LLC. That's for the capital improvements.
Any council comment? Any public comment on this order? And we will vote on order number fifty three. All those in favor. Passes seven zero. Counsel Magalaw, can I have you read order number fifty four?
Yes, order number fifty four dash twenty twenty five, providing for approval of an appointment to the Board of Appeals. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the appointment of Christopher Libby to the Board of Appeals for a three year term to expire April, twenty twenty eight. Note, Christopher's application was received on four, four, twenty twenty five and is the only application on file. If approved, the board has one partial seat available expiring four, twenty twenty seven with the resignation of David Saucier.
Motion made by Counsel Magalaw and seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Any council comment on this order? Counsel June May?
Just on his little handwritten note. I hope the car wasn't moving when he filled this out on his. Hope you weren't driving it there.
Did you read the bomb? Please forgive my penmanship. Uh I wanted to comment actually on, on the unfortunately put in is why are you seeking to become a community representative? The answer that he gave is perfect and I think everyone that's, it lives in a community should benefit it somehow. And I think his answer is absolutely perfect. Uh so thank you for taking the initiative and applying to do this. Um it takes big shoes to, to want to do something like this. So thank you.
Any other council comments? Any published comment? Being none will take it back to a vote on order number fifty four. All those in favor. Passes seven zero. Counselor Bragdon, can I have you read order number fifty five?
Order number fifty five dash twenty twenty five, providing for approval of an application for a vicular license for the Blue Ox Saloon. It is ordered that the attached application for a vicular license is hereby approved for Thomas St. John, sixty one, Knox, but Admiral and Ockit. Doing business as the Blue Ox Saloon, sixty one, Knox, but Admiral.
Motion made by Counsel Bragdon, seconded by Counsel June. Any council comment on this order? Counsel Bragdon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh given some of the events that we've had with the Blue Ox Saloon recently, I just want to make sure this is right. Didn't his son have partial ownership of the company as well? So should his name also be on the doing business as portion or how does that work?
Well, I not mandatory for both of them to be on.
Okay.
Apologies. Yeah, so it's kosher.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other council comment? Any public comment? Did we lose the public, Mr. Manager?
Well, I've got them over here.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor, order number fifty five. Passes seven zero. Uh Counselor Pelletier, can I have you read order number fifty six?
Certainly. Order number fifty six, uh twenty twenty five, providing for pool for an application for victim's license. For squid in restaurant. It is ordered that the attached application for victim's license hereby for George Simon, seventy, Penobscot Avenue, Millinocket. Doing business that squid in restaurant, seventy, Penobscot Avenue, Millinocket.
Motion made by Counsel Pelletier, seconded by Counsel June. Any council comment on this order? Any public comment on the order? Being none, back to the council for vote. All those in favor, order number fifty six. Passes seven zero. Uh Counselor Macken, can I have you read order number fifty seven?
Order number fifty seven, twenty twenty five, providing for a total of a registration for a particular license for Daigo Family LLC MFT. It is ordered that the attached application for the fifty hundred license is hereby approved for Jeff Daigo, the over on doing business as Daigo Family LLC Mobile Food Truck. Business address, one nine, we stick to Midway Road, Millinocket.
Motion made by Counsel Macken, uh seconded by Counsel Higgins. Counselor comment on this order?
Counsel June May? I strongly encourage all of my counselors to support Counselor Macken in her reading of this order. Thank you.
And other counselor comment? Any public comment? All right, back to the council for a vote on order number fifty seven. All those in favor. That passes seven zero. Counselor Higgins, can I have you read order number fifty eight?
Estimating Chair, order number fifty eight, twenty twenty five. Provided for approval of an application for a vicular license for Circle K. It is ordered that the attached application for a vicular license is hereby approved for Max Convenience Stores LLC. Columbus, sorry, Columbus, Indiana, doing business at Circle K. Number four, seven, zero, seven, one, one, three. Business address, seven, nineteen, Central Street, Millinocket.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Higgins, seconded by Counsel Magalaw. Uh council comment on this order?
They're a scrutinized.
I don't know. There we go, counsel.
What was that? Uh given that I do work at this location, I will be abstaining from this order tonight. There was a store that flooded in Southern Maine, so they took fire over it.
Any um additional council would call that on the board?
Thank you, Counsel Bragdon.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Other comment on this order? Being none, we will take it back to the council for vote. All those in favor. All those abstaining. Let's see, Counsel June May, can I have you read order number fifty nine? I will uh make a comment before you start though. Some of the information that was provided to us is updated and as far as their wastewater um is current.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That completely changes my vote. Order number sixty dash twenty twenty five, providing for fire station window.
We're not, we're on.
Oh, sorry.
I hope the wastewater's up to date.
There we go. Order number fifty nine, twenty twenty five. Providing for approval of the application for Victor's license for Hillcrest Golf Club. It is ordered that the attached application for the Victor's license is hereby approved for Hillcrest Golf Club, One Golf Course Road. Millinocket, doing business as Hillcrest Golf Club. Business address, One Golf Course Road, Millinocket.
Okay, motion made by Counsel June, seconded by Counselor Bragdon. Counsel comment on this order? Public comment on the order? Being none will take it back to the council for a vote. All those in favor of order number fifty nine. Motion passes seven zero. Counsel Magalaw, can I have you read order number sixty?
Yeah, certainly. Order number sixty dash twenty twenty five, providing for fire station window install bid award. Whereas a bid opening for this project was held April third, twenty twenty five, where four bids were received and reviewed. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council, at the recommendation of the town manager and fire chief, awards this bid to Bangor, Bangor Abatement at their price of eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Bids received, renewal by Anderson, twenty seven thousand, one hundred seventy six. Portland Glass, thirty four thousand, nine oh nine seventy one. Bangor Abatement, eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty. And Nickerson and Oday, twenty five thousand, four hundred and ten.
Motion made by Counsel Magalaw and seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Counsel comment on the order? Any public comment on this order? Being none, back to the council for vote on order number sixty. All those in favor. The motion passes seven zero. Counselor Pelletier, can I have you read order number sixty one?
Really? Resolve number one.
Oh, no, order number sixty one. I did it.
Order number sixty one, that's twenty twenty five, providing for approval of funding for chimney repair. Whereas the municipal building chimney is in dire need of repairs to make sure its safety and overall safety. And whereas the administrative team has made multiple attempts to have this work voted and performed over the past two years. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the attached vote for repairs submitted by Fiddler on on the blue chimney service. Just further order that supports amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars for this repair is allocated from the unsigned fund.
Motion made by Counsel Pelletier, seconded by Counsel Bragdon. Counsel comment on this order? Any public comment on the order? Being none, back to the council for vote. Or all those in favor of order number sixty one. The motion passes seven zero. Counselor Bragdon, can I have you read resolve?
Resolve number one, twenty twenty five. Resolution of the Town Council of Millinocket Maine declaring support for the preservation of the federal tax exemption of municipal bonds. Whereas the tax exempt municipal bond market is a widely used source of capital for state, local government, tribes, territories, and non-profaments borrowers that find it, that finances a tremendous share of the nation's public infrastructure and whereas state and local government.
Make a motion that we forego the whereas.
Second. I would recommend that we read it personally. I, I'm willing to do it. I think it's important.
So we had a motion in a second. How do we vote on foregoing the reading? All those in favor foregoing the reading? All those against. Continue to read.
Thank you, Louie, anyway. Uh whereas state, local government finances about three quarters of the public infrastructure in the United States and uses tax exempt bonds to do so, with the federal government providing only about one quarter of the investment. And whereas federal tax exemption for municipal bonds dating back to the eighteen hundreds and incorporated into the modern tax period in nineteen thirteen has been crucial for state and local governments to affordably finance critical infrastructure projects. And whereas tax exempt bonds offer borrowers to achieve a multiplier effect of two point one one, meaning that for every dollar borrowers achieve two dollars and eleven cents in borrowing cost savings, thereby demonstrating the efficiency and effectiveness of this exemption in facilitating infrastructure investments. And whereas tax exempt bonds provide for essential infrastructure projects such as roads, bridges, utilities, broadband, water and sewer systems, and hospitals, which are vital to the health and well being for our community. Such that without such bonds, the cost of borrowing would be more expensive, thereby causing an increase in taxes and fees. That would place an undue burden on taxpayers. And whereas the town council of Millinocket Maine finds and determines that tax exempt municipal bonds provide an opportunity for economic development along its path, better for economic development along its path, better facilitate the movement of agricultural products, equipment, and other goods, meaning through safety. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the city, as follows, the governing body hereby encourages the main congressional delegation to assist the town of Millinocket Maine by preserving the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds by supporting and ensuring the protection of the federal tax exemption of municipal bonds. Be it further resolved, the copies of the resolution being furnished to all members of the main congressional delegation.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Bragden, uh, seconded by Counsel McGowan. Counsel comment on the resolve?
Yes, Madam Chair. As part of the backup, they were specifically asking for, to provide some examples of projects that this impacted. Um, I would recommend that we also include that, especially with the way we are in rural town, and it would impact greatly on some of our projects towards infrastructure and it just go, go to show exactly where that is helping us and how it would impact us if that was to go along.
Thank you, Counsel Higgins. I agree with you, and I know, Mr. Manager, when we do send this in, I think you can have a little personal letter and, and a couple of examples of how important this is to us. Would you like?
Yes, I did. I was going to ask you if you could speak to where we do have.
Oh, sure. So, um, the town of Millinocket reportedly has four active tech-invested bonds that were used to fund critical major wastewater infrastructure repairs and upgrades, all of this, uh, utility and the infrastructure and the performance of it, maintenance of it, the, the way it operates, all pretty highly exciting. The, as we see in the EPA. Right now, we have total, um, the total borrowed, um, for those projects, two thousand eight five million, seven hundred and five thousand. Financial impact expected from, uh, from these ranges anywhere from twenty-five percent cost for for these types of bonds, so. It's a, it's, it's a pretty big deal. And, you know, that's just what we have current. The town has benefited from, uh, funding other infrastructure projects over the years. Um, in a large sense, as well as in school. Or earlier tonight, that, that, you know, thankfully, the, the school department is making their final, uh, debt service payment on a bond, uh, in this next fiscal year, and that one has been paid for, uh, but that, you know, that funded a massive project. Got a bunch of other things for education. I certainly put together a more detailed experience of, of projects and, and a digital. Are to a company.
Uh, Counsel Pelletier?
Just curious what future infrastructure work you believe we'd be having, uh, bonding for.
Well, you know, on the table right now, depending on where we want to, uh, grant work, uh, you know, we have uh, the reconstruction project happening on, on Bates Street, um, that, that will be completed by the end of two thousand. Our share of that is roughly two million dollars. On that, for the roadway extension, if that is not successfully funded, which you're confident about still, uh, you know, that's five million dollars. You know, we have several other, you know, long-term goals designed with the downtown reconstruction, and, and, you know, even at ten percent of that total, should the V P I be successful, if the budget is vast and the plan is funded for the D O T, um, our ten percent share would be in the three million dollar.
One more, one, one more in there.
Yeah.
That is a taxable bond that's outside of.
It is.
Yeah, that is outside.
Any other counsel comment?
Would you be mentioning those, well, that in your letter?
Yes, yeah.
Perfect.
Counsel Higgins?
And thank you, Mr. Manager, for sending that email. I would add information I did ask you.
Blasted.
I had a little bit on my plate.
Any public comment on this order? Well, on this resolve? We'll come back to the council for a vote on resolve number one, S twenty twenty-five. All those in favor? Passes seven zero. That brings us to reports and communications. Warrant Committee for April twenty-four, council meeting, Counselor Mackin and Counsel McGowan. You suffer? I'll stop for that?
Very good, thank you.
Uh, Chair Committee Report, um, as Chair of the Age Friendly Committee, I do have a couple, uh, announcements to make, and I believe I made them last time, but Millinocket, um, Earth Day Community Cleanup uh, age-friendly is heavily involved in this, and there's all kinds of postings about it. April twenty-second, it's during school vacation week, and I know we have some school folks that are going to join us. Did you have comment?
I just wanted to say that we've, I've also been announcing that at school too, for students who can earn community service hours, so they're all aware of it as well.
Yeah, I think, I believe the softball and the baseball teams are going to be involved. Yeah, so hopefully we'll have a lot of community involvement in that. And I do want to give a shout out to the chief as well, because, uh, uh, your program started Monday, April seventh, the carbon monoxide smoke alarm installation, as well as home fire safety survey program. So there's, um, information posted about that. You want to know more, um, there's more to share, but, uh,
I would love to know.
Very good. I can share, I can share the.
Oh, that'd be great.
I can share the flyer with you. Um, so there are free, uh, carbon monoxide, carbon monoxide and smoke alarm installations available, uh, detectors available for people, and, um, we need to contact the chief and get that set up. Any other, yeah. I don't believe there's any other committee report that takes us to the public for any two-minute period of the two-minute public timeout. And seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, motion made by Counsel Bragden, seconded by Counsel McGowan. All those in favor of adjournment? Passes seven zero.